School Board Meeting Back to Order. Do we have a motion?
Yes. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting.
Second, move by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Dr. Acuff. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. I'm sorry. Mr. Chuck Pace?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin? Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. Next we will have our roll call. Let's start with Josiah Black.
Good evening. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Allison Spillman, At-Large Representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall.
Judy Lee Ravanna, District.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett, District.
Graham Page, Millau District.
Chuck Pace, Rio District.
Helen Dunn, Public Affairs and Strategic Communications Officer.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Pat McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
And Dr. Haas down in the seats. Next we'll stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Next we'll have our Moment of Silence. Okay, tonight we have a special work session for our budget, so we'll be receiving the superintendent's presentation of the draft funding request. Dr. Haas, are we ready?
The main feedback, I presented this at the leadership team the other day, and people were telling me I needed to smile when I was presenting. So if you see me begin to furrow my brows or whatever, if you smile at me, that'd be my cue to smile. And also, my wife told me to not slouch. She's been telling me that for 34 years. It hasn't worked yet. But in this slide, really, is my opportunity to say thank you. I'm gonna start my timer for this opportunity. Don't seem to see the mouse here. Where is it? Oh, let's see. I can't see it because it's up there, right?
I think I've got it.
Okay, you got it? All right, I don't need your timer, probably fine. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this draft. And then also, I really want to thank our Fiscal Services Department, Jackson Zimmerman, our School Finance Officer, Dave Basemi, Rita Dean, Annette DeFrank, Stephanie Grady, Amy Hottinger, Anita Moore, Jill Preddy, Michelle Shiflett, and Gina Weigold for all the work that they did to help put this together. And of course, mentioning separately Ms. Maya Kumazawa for her leadership, her technical skill, and her ability to problem solve and look for opportunities. Just an amazing partner in this work. Key partners, just for the presentation part, have been, of course, Jennifer Butler, and Jennifer said she's watching on stream, so thank you, Jennifer. Sarah Dusenberry, who works our Power BI. She's our Data Analyst and Reporting Specialist. Jamie Gelner, Lauren Hunt, and of course, Rosalyn. Christine Thompson and Tara Bolton have all really just tons of effort to pull it all together. And of course, if I failed to mention Helen, has really kind of just helped frame the whole thing up right from the get-go, so thank you. All right. So for the agenda this evening, I've just got six topics, and we'll just work our way through. Am I advancing, or you?
Do you want me to?
I think I can.
Okay.
And if I forget, you could, or if I'm blathering, you can push me ahead. So just beginning with our strategic plan and talk a little bit about continuous improvement. We're all well familiar with this plan now. It's been in place for three years. And one of the things I'm really proud to say is that our strategic plan is about, it guides our budget. It's not just a static document that sits on a shelf. And when we work on our spending plan, our draft spending plan, and arrive at eventual budget, it's integrated, and we don't back into it when we're asked about it. Sometimes it helps just to say things differently, to make it more clear. Our mission statement, for example, just reframe more in clear, everyday language. As a team, we want to make sure that race, class, gender, and special capacities do not decide how well our children do in school. We plan to achieve this by providing excellent teaching and learning opportunities for everyone. We also want to connect with families and communities to make sure every student does well. And our goal is to get to know each student personally. So we have a plan. How does it become action? Well, it becomes action through often a series of steps that are related to each other and involve different segments of our school community. And so, this is just the beginning of a theory. It's not the theory, but the beginning of the beginning. And you can see central to all this is students and families. When our school board members are in the policy role and seeking feedback and listening, allocating resources, that leads to work through the Central Office, principals and administration, educators, support staff, leading to students learning and growing. Another way that the strategic plan becomes a reality is when the school board uses it to develop operating principles. One of the things we talk about in our plan, our third goal, is to have transformative and equitable resources. And taking that, translating it into operating principles for the board that you use when you're developing your budget, is how that becomes real. You worked with Maya five years ago to develop these operating principles, and I request, you know, that the board, on a frequent basis, take a look at these principles to see if they still fit the work that we're doing. Okay? They're admirable, and they also are open to change with the times, so. We are all the way third from the right. We're still kind of in the middle. We're at the top where it says Budget Development, the Draft Funding Request, so we're still in the thick of it. And if you begin with the end in mind, our ultimate goal is to have the budget balanced and state budget set by the VDOE. Of course, that didn't happen this school year until September. I hope they move a little faster this year. That would be great. But that's where we're headed and ultimately balancing, but we're far from there. And I think it's important to remember that, that we're still in the thick of it. There's been a lot of work up front to pull in our school community, our employees, our students, our families, through various advisory groups, and to hear them and hear what their needs are and hear their ideas. And that's turned into planning, preliminary planning. And so that's where we are tonight, is a very preliminary draft plan to share with the board. Another goal in our strategic plan is to affirm and empower our communities. And again, we want that to come to life. We don't just want it to be a goal stated on a piece of paper. So as part of the engagement process for budget planning or for our spending plan, there are MIRAD groups that Maya meets with, that our staff meets with, and we provide protocols for these advisories to have input for our spending plan. The benefit of this, though, is always turns out to be much more than just conversations about spending money and the budget. When we engage with employees, we engage with our students, we learn a lot about their day-to-day experiences and how the successes they're having, the wins, the challenges, and it's always opportunities to help on an individual basis. Not long ago, we started doing something new. We call it the All-Welcome Meeting, where we invited employees, all employees, to attend on the workday. And Ms. Spillman was there. That was fun. And so we met at Western, and it was just an opportunity to present just a short presentation. Maya and Dr. Kaiser, Claire Kaiser, presented how we staff our schools and answered questions about that. And then we just did Q and A for close to an hour and 15 minutes. And I've had a lot of positive feedback about it, and I did a survey to see how it went. Our next one is planned for March 29th, so we'll probably pick one of the high schools to do that as well. That's the next workday. So we'll put it out in invite pretty soon. Through all of these engagement opportunities and listening, and really focusing in on what teachers and students need for high-quality teaching and learning and feeling safe in school, all these ideas were prioritized through that process. And they're all aligned with our mission, aligned with our overarching goals. What I want to draw your attention to is that the ones that are bold and asterisked, those are the ones that we are, a few slides later on, you'll see those are the ones that we are putting forth. And I'll also go into the rationale for that. Let's give you a minute to take a look at it. I don't think there's any surprises. Some of these, we, just prior to the pandemic, we had a pretty flush budget process that year. We were looking at sick leave payout upon retirement. That was the first year we were planning on taking a swing at the $15 minimum wage. We had to back off of that and bring it back after the pandemic onset. And there are other new things, like a community and schools coordinator, a walk-to-school coordinator planner, some innovations that we would try to build fairness and equity into the opportunities that we have. So next thing I want to touch base on is the ever-increasing role of public schools, because I think it sets the context for where we are right now. This comes out of a book by Dave Jek called Courageous School Leadership. You have the chapter, a paper copy of it, and he's referencing a book called Schools Can't Do It Alone by Jamie Volmer. And one of the things I recognize, and I left it this way so I could talk a little bit about it, is that all the way to the 17th century, it's somewhat a whitewashing of history of schools. Talks about the Puritans establishing public schools and basic reading, writing, arithmetic, and cultivating values that serve a democratic society, which is true. However, one of our colleagues, Sarah Harris, not long ago advertised a book study, and I recommend this book. It's called Schoolhouse Burning. The whole first part of the book talks about the establishment of community schools by black communities after the Civil War, during Reconstruction, and into the late 19th century, early 20th century. And as you read and learn about how those schools established community, the skills that they worked on, the supporting student needs, ultimately fighting for democracy and advocating with their states and federal government for funding, they really laid the foundation for what I think our current model of public schooling is. So I haven't seen it described this way before because I attended the whitewashed school history classes when I was learning to become a teacher. So it's Derek Black, Schoolhouse Burning. So moving into the 20th century, there's a shift, historical shift, with schools taking on more programs to provide services that other sectors of society, government, and family once provided. And then moving forward into the latter part of the 20th century, the author talks about 86 additional responsibilities, and I'll list some of those when I go to the next slide. So, let's see. Want to be able to scroll this, but it doesn't work with my finger. Do I, let's see. It's fighting me. I want to be able to scroll my notes. Christine Thompson. Christine Thompson. Do we know how to scroll the notes here? So I could see. I wasn't going to rely on notes, but... The problem is I can't see the mouse on the... It's all right. I'll just go through it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, buddy. So during the last several decades, you can see that mission changing from the earliest iteration of public schools. And some examples from 1910 to 1930 include adding physical education, including organized sports, to our high schools. In the 1940s, we added several things, including school lunch programs, half-day kindergarten. 1950s, with Sputnik, there were expansion of science and math education, driver's education, sex education. Virginia calls it family life and didn't seem to have the nerve to start it until 1990, but it's claimed that it was in the 50s here. 1960s, AP programs, Head Start, Title I, Adult Education, Consumer Education. Of course, it was the 60s, so things about peace, leisure, recreation. 1970s, programs really took off with Title IX, IDEA, English as a Second Language Programming, after-school programs, alternative education. And then you get into the 1990s, there was, seemed to be a tug-of-war pushing back and forth on which federal, which party had the, could claim public education. You had Goals 2000 with the Democrats, America 2000 Initiatives. And then when you get into the 21st century, it's No Child Left Behind, which was a Republican initiative, followed by Every Student Succeeds, and including Race to the Top, when Arne Duncan was the Secretary of Education, and that's when we began more of a corporate education reform model. And the list goes on, and it really doesn't include all the mandated testing that we do, how much time and energy we put into that for accreditation. And it certainly doesn't count the last few years where we had the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, which really completely transformed the role of public schools in our society. I don't say this all to complain, because that's what we do. And that's all I've ever known. I started teaching in 1990, when schools were already very much about community, and we didn't have all the great programs that we've added over time to help support the whole child and families. But it was what I understood education to be. I had lunch tickets when I was a student in school, so I had free and reduced lunch. I never thought twice about it. It was just part of my school program. So I see it as our equity mission. Part of our equity mission and one of our values, we say that we will provide every student with the level of support necessary to thrive. And we have employees with the passion and the expertise to do the work, and they're well situated to do that work, and schools are best situated. The issue is that we are not granted the resources to do the work. And that's the challenge we run into, and that's the challenge that we're going to confront this year as we work our way through our spending plan. Bring on, bring it on. We want to be, we want to serve students and their families. We need the resources to do the work. And so that leads to a little bit of conversation about our revenue trend and the current funding gap. All these article spotlights, I provided for you with paper, and that way the community also can access these. This serves as a history of local and state funding changes, particularly during the onset of the pandemic. If you just kind of watch it, it's a history lesson of things that were going on after the Great Recession of the 21st century, post-Great Recession. And then moving into the pandemic around FY '21, and then it's, you know, we have our peaks and valleys. And part of what I want to draw your attention to is that with, and this is, and the FY ' '25 draft is with our current proposals, it is a modest gap that we're looking at right now. It's about a 5% gap in terms of the proposals that we're putting forward. So we're not looking at having some issues around our revenue and then still putting out a 15% peak like we did in FY '22, when we had strong, very strong, local revenue. But it's a good trail to follow, and of course, you can see at the end of it, you've got the state revenue taking the plunge, and I'll talk a little bit about that. The plunge is primarily around what is called the Local Composite Index. And I know when Jim Regenbaugh came, he gave a great explanation of how that worked. There's other things in there, too, like repealing the whole harmless that localities received around the grocery tax. But the big culprit is around the LCI, and you can see a 14% change from the 2022-24 biennium to the 2024-26 biennium. And the three factors, as you know, that go into calculating our local ability to pay are property values, which makes sense, because property taxes is what goes into local revenue that supports the schools, which, as you can see, is the lion's share, and then our local government funds beyond that as a percentage. The next part is state sales tax, which also makes sense, because that all goes to Richmond, goes into Big Hopper, and then it's distributed around the state on an approximation of equity through the LCI. The really flawed part of it is the adjusted gross income. Because what that, what happens with that is it all is calculated through tax returns going to Richmond and its two-year-old data, and it tells you about spikes in local income, and we don't have access to that. It's an approximation of wealth. It's a factor that's supposed to be used to say, well, you have all this local income, therefore, you can spend more money on public schools in your community. So all those things go together, and really, the one that's the worst issue in there is the adjusted gross income in terms of how it impacted us. We had the fourth-largest growth in our composite index in Virginia, and Charlottesville had the third. And there's an article that I provided, that actually Rebecca provided, that talked about how the flaws in the LCI have, were listed in the article as one of 22 districts in Virginia that are expected to pay more than Loudoun, which is the most, which is the richest county in America. So because of those flaws. And because people are migrating into our area but working and still working in Washington, DC. So I think I've said enough about the LCI. We wish we could put a stake in it, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. So then you just kind of look at the whole big picture around our school revenue change. You look at what we had last year, FY '24 was our adopted, and then our draft, and you can see the difference there in our local revenue, about close to $10 million. It's moderate growth, but it's still reliable growth, and we know what it is right now. In terms of the state, you see the drop. And then with federal, it's kind of hard to look at that, given all the federal requirements that we have. $618,000 out of a $270 million budget. So there's your gap, there's the difference in total revenues. Kind of sums that up. And so now let's turn to our expenditure summary. So as I mentioned earlier, it's a 5% possible or proposed expenditure increase. Elimination of one-time FY '24 expenditures is really elimination of spent use of fund balance that we had in our budget last year. So that's typical. The baseline adjustment, the $4 million there, there are some baseline adjustments. The biggest one is the 2% pay increase that we provided employees during the course of this school year. That was at, we did not, as you noticed, we didn't make a technical adjustment or appropriate funding to do that. We just smushed it into the current spending plan. So we have to appropriate it this year as part of the operating budget. Technical changes, nondiscretionary, things like electricity costs, inflation, stuff like that. And then the proposals are about $10 million. So let's talk about the proposals. And it's just five. And when you looked at all those ideas earlier, I would say that those ideas were around accelerating. They were about moving things forward better and faster than what we've been currently doing. Things are improving, but we're about continuous improvement and keep getting better. I believe if we could include most of those or prioritize them in some way and have a lot of them, we could move faster. We could keep getting better faster. These are really about holding the course, maintaining service that we have in place, which, we have a lot of services in place that are helping us move forward. So it's not trying to move backwards, but it really is about holding our course with where we are. 3% market increase, English learner growth, special education growth, social emotional supports, and intervention. Talk a little bit about this, a little more detail. So I want to talk a little bit about sustainable wages. 76% of our employees of all kinds live in Charlottesville or Albemarle, which is, as you know, the cost of labor and cost of living in this area are very high. And so it is something to take into consideration. We want to stay competitive. When we have a tough market, we kept the board, the board has localities right around us, but we also still benchmark ourselves against Prince William and Henrico Alexandria, and because we are really competing with those places. Just because they're many miles away, you know how tough it is right now to hire a math teacher or a special ed teacher. You're competing with those places. So we want to be competitive, so the board set a target of 60% instead of being at-market, which is 50%. And we have, the board has taken big swings to get to the top of our local market. We have the highest starting pay for teachers in our region, right here, in our vicinity. And then we do standardized increases, which cost more. And what that means is that when we apply comp increases, we don't just say, well, the teachers, the licensed staff get this, and then the classified staff get this. We do the same for everybody. And that was something that this board started doing maybe three years ago. That was, and so you decided at that point, we're all moving forward together. There's a lot of reasons why we want to have this increase. One that particularly hits home for me is that we've had a lot of success with provisional licensure, with our paraprofessionals joining our teaching force, which has caused us to have a growth in our diversity of our teaching corps, because there's a lot of diversity in our professional corps, and as they move into the teaching ranks, you saw a 2% bump in our teachers of color last year, which was historic for Albemarle. So another article I did put in there was just driving home for our community the power of diversity in our workforce. the power of diversity in our workforce. That there's this myth out there that diversity, equity, inclusion is kind of a dead concept. And that Fortune 500 companies are abandoning these programs. It's absolutely not true. You see it in the negativity of the media because it draws attention. But recently, that the article that I sent you came from NPR Marketplace. And it talked about surveying Fortune 500 CEOs, whether they, how much they value diversity, and why do they value it? And the majority, even, well, I shouldn't say even, but the majority across political spectrum and the type of company said diversity is important in their workforce. And the reason is because you get better results in the work. You get, when you have racially, culturally, age, creed, religion, neurologically, and nationally diverse, gender expansive workforce, you can really access the strengths of your workforce when you do that. It leads to innovation and creativity that you weren't going to have before. You get better decisions. It enhances your decision-making capacity because everybody looks at something through a different cultural lens or the experiences that they've had in life, which really pushes things forward. And I'm convinced that the more diverse we are as a school system, particularly in our teaching ranks, we will be more successful for those reasons, let alone the reason of having teachers that look like our children. So it worries me when we, if we could, if we lose our competitiveness in our pay. So I think this is a really, this slide we worked on a lot. I had input and it got worked on a lot. And it tells a story of these two student populations, which are near and dear to us. And it's a story of growth. And it's a story, not just of growth that we count each September, but it's a story of growth during the year. I think, I don't know if Maya came up with a particular way of doing that or Jennifer Butler, but if you look on students with disabilities, students with special capabilities enrollment, and it's 1797, as of December, it's 1923. And some of those are also seats that we pay for prep, that's included in there. But there's growth from, there's been a great deal of growth during the school year, either through identification, or we are a destination for families with students with special needs because we've really run a strong program here and staff it well. And then you see the same thing for EL enrollment. We started the year with 1645, and now it's at 1751 as of February 13th. I rehearsed this presentation in our leadership team meeting the other day. And then I got this fantastic email from Lauren McLean. And I'm not going to like try to plagiarize what she said. I'm just going to read you what she said to me. She said, "We talk about diversity as being important and valuable for staffing. But when we talk about it for students, we're still talking about it from a deficit-based standpoint, about how our ELs and our students with disabilities need more support." I tell teachers and leaders that we don't need more EL staff because our EL students or our students with disabilities need more support. We need more staffing so that we can empower these students to access the rich funds of knowledge they bring into our schools, which makes our schools and communities better. Instruction for these students, or she is over EL. So she said, "EL instruction 50 years ago was about providing meaningful access to instruction for our students. But now it's about how we ensure we're able to access their funds of knowledge." And she says it's really the same for students with disabilities. And says it's a subtle shift, but if we think about diversity as an asset, we can't just say that for our staff. We have to believe it for our students too. I thought that was very well said. And I think it speaks for the fact that by adding the staff that we need, we want to help these students be academically successful. The return on investment for that, though, for our school community is much more than just raising test scores. Social emotional supports, we used American Rescue Plan funding, which was one-time funding. We were charged by the governor to spend down that money, so we spent it down. And we, so we're looking at it now as something we want to build into our recurring budget, but we redrafted the logic model that's in the budget notebook, when you see that. And when we had our work session the other night, more than one board member talked about how when we're doing this work, we don't want to just do it based on numbers at the schools. And how do you look at what the needs of the school are based on what's happening there? So you can see what we want to do is hold serve and then plus. So we want, we need the funding to pay for this in the recurring budget, but we want to add three positions. Or we're also grabbing three positions that are from a legacy program that we want to tool into this program. So we want to move from the 24 FTE total to a total of 30. 27 out of our school fund, three that are in the legacy program that we started many years ago called the C program. There are still three staff out there with, not connected to this initiative. We'd like to bring them into it because they have the expertise. So, and so what we would do is they would be, they'd have a minimum of one in each school. And then you differentiate staffing based on our universal screener for social emotional, which is DESA, and then also panorama survey results, mental health referrals, threat assessments, chronic absenteeism rates, and free reduced lunch numbers. So by using that to differentiate, some schools will have some more support. And then three will be at the central office until school starts, where if there's schools that really have demonstrated a high need coming out of the last school year, we can use them to position them in those schools. So because we want to be nimble with that. And tiered supports. The message, the main thing I want to take away for this is that we want to hold serve on the reading, math interventionists that we currently provide to our schools. So in our current model, there's 63 FTE total. And in the proposed model, we also want to have 63. It's going to require additional local funding because of shifts in the federal funding. With IDEA, we are being required to use the money we were putting behind the FTE for this for other programs. And we had to do budget adjustments because the funding from Title that used to pay for 15, now, once you put it in today's dollars and catch up as you scrub the budget, it doesn't pay for that many anymore. So we need to add to that. But the main thing is we want to hold it, we want to hold constant from last year to this year. With all those, with those proposals in mind, this then becomes your full expenditure summary. And when I look at this, what I see is an emphasis on instruction and then meeting student needs. Some other big players are transportation. There's your, there's how it's all spread out. And so once, we've talked a little bit about anticipated revenues, and now we're looking at proposed expenditures. And you can see that we have a request of $272.9 million. And it includes now a $13.3 million gap between ACPS student needs and our available revenue, which is about 5% of the budget. All right. So we debated some as to whether we should be talking about, well, how can we start closing this gap? Because, you know, right now, it's just about the plan. But I do think I want to be sensitive to all, to people that see this presentation and it could cause you worry to see a gap like that. I want, when I talked to the leadership team about this the other day, I wanted to let them know that I'm optimistic about how this will play out. And I think it's really important for all of us as leaders is that to have a sense of optimism about it because it will play out. We will hold serve for our students. And then you have a new baseline that you work through in the next year. But between now and then, there's a lot that can happen. Remember, I showed you earlier, we are just beginning to get to the right on our process. We're still in the middle of it. This is just the beginning. We can plan for higher revenues. And that's a real possibility. The state, at the state level, Governor Youngkin's budget landed with a thud. You have the House and the Senate, they've both put forth budgets that increased education spending by $1.5 billion. Somewhere in there, there's stuff for us, there's funding for us. If they push the grocery tax, hold harmless back in place, that's on the order of more than $3 million for us. If, one of the pieces I saw, I think, in the Senate budget was around the support caps to totally eliminate support caps, that's millions of dollars for Alamo County because we really staff, support staff. There are, and there are other opportunities, working our way through that budget, even including if they come through with a compensation increase over the next two years. Because part of our gap is the 3% comp increase. So we've already budgeted for it, and then funding we would receive for it then would supplant that and reduce our gap. So I want to be encouraging about this. We can make reductions. We're exploring how we can look at reductions, and that'll be part of work session one. We'll need to, we'll do it across the board so that there's, you know, everybody feels a little pain across the organization, but not any, you know, nothing crippling because we can adjust this. It's 5% of our budget. And then we could also reduce those proposals. I do think it's less likely because they are, I think, we would, at least from a staff perspective, to meet the needs of our kids, we need to keep moving forward with those. And I just want to say, you know, I've kind of adopted a mantra. Having been here before the pandemic started and still living with it in the aftermath, I'm one of, not a whole lot of superintendents that were here before it started or stayed after it or during it. And so what I've talked to people about is if we could get through that, we could get through this. Okay? We had a whole budget planned and made the presentation, all that, in the spring of 2020. The board was good, you know, salute, we're ready to roll. A few weeks later, we had a new budget that was $15 million less. And I, when Rosalind and I had our first conversations on Zoom about where we were going and with Maya, you know, the first thing we talked about is we are, we're keeping our employees. That's, when we talk to the board, that's what we want to do. That's our first priority. Because we were hearing from our bus drivers, well, you're not going to need us. You're going to keep us employed? And we heard from school staff, well, if you're going virtual, you're not going to need as many teachers for that. Are we going to furlough people? What are we going to do? So we just ended that question by saying, no, we're keeping our employees. Unless you resign or retire and because you're ready to head out, you're, you started with us, you're with us. And I remember calling board members that were on the board at that time and saying, you know, our plan, we don't have a plan, but what we're doing, what we want to do is figure out how we're going to keep all the employees. And Judy said, that's what I want to do too. And Ellen said, that's what I want to do. Kate and Graham, Jana, Dave, all of them. We want to keep our employees. And then we made it happen. And I've always believed where there's a will, there's a way. And I want, it's hard to say to somebody, just trust, trust us, we got it. But I want to know that that's, I want people to know that that's the intention. I wish, I wish the trust, you could be, feel good about where we're headed, and we're going to, we're going to get through this together, all of us together. So let's, we'll just hang in there. And however we're reacting to the budget shortfall is how people around us are going to react to it. So we want to set a good example on that. Real quick, just, we started doing this a couple of years ago, laying out where we are with capital. Look, I like to look at our 10-year projection first. So 10 years from now, we'll have, if the projections hold true, have about another 1,000 students. And then you just kind of back it up, five years out, another 376. And we've taken that approach, that big blue area, because look at what's happened before that. I mean, it's a roller coaster. So we have current needs, and we will have greater needs in the future. And we need to keep reforming education, and how you do that is often through the facilities. Our last new school was built in 2002. I was talking to a couple of reporters today about the budget, and they were looking at each other, doing the math. And they were, you know, they were 25 years old, so it's a long time ago when we had a new school. You can see where we're overcrowded. 53% of the students in the division attend overcrowded schools, high concentration in the high school, and about 50% elementary school. These are prioritized. And the board has landed in the right priorities. You can see, right? You look at the green, you've budgeted and you're building Center 2. And that's where, high school was where your biggest, your largest percentage of students are in overcrowded schools. Elementary was next, so you've tackled the southern feeder pattern and northern feeder pattern. And tonight, there'll be some conversation around that in terms of redistricting work that's going on. Partially funded is the ongoing programs and high school improvements and elevators. But you have a long list of unfunded. And then looking out to FY30, '34, you can see the needs assessment. So that's kind of like looking out on the horizon of where we might need to go. And this is all coming from Long Range Planning Advisory Committee. I did pop an article in there, just talking about the one penny sales tax that's now been approved through the Senate and the House. And that would mean a great deal for us locally. That could be between $20 and $40 million annually of capital dollars devoted to schools, which would really help us catch up on what we need to get done. Conclusion and timeline. All right, so here's the timeline again. Look at all the stuff that's gone on behind this, planning. My opportunity to thank our staff again for all that work. Here's the draft funding request. Going to have a public hearing, got some work sessions on it. Go to the Board of Supervisors. We're making our way. And what's happening next will be the 29th, that's a work session. We'll look at all those topics. In the meantime, school board, make sure you email budget@K12Almoor as you're making your way through the budget notebook. And I will just say, you know, I do a question and answer in the weekly check-in. And I had the question a couple of weeks ago, someone asked me, what are you excited about with the budget and what worries you? And I said, when I work with the budget, I see more than just numbers. I see individual people who make our schools and departments thrive. My purpose here, my purpose here in Alamo County is to support the remarkable people working tirelessly to positively impact students' learning and shape their present and future lives. Our school division budget predominantly consists of over 85%. 85% of our budget is people. It's the people that you see, like Kenny, out there working every day. And that's the budget in our school system, and that's what I see. And that's exciting. And I've talked tonight a little bit about what concerns me. But despite the challenges that we have, I maintain hope for our future, this immediate future. Our local government funding remains consistent and reliable. I'm optimistic because our Alamo representatives in the Virginia Legislature are committed to supporting our schools and shaping the final state budget. Furthermore, our school board staunchly supports our public schools. Every single one of you is a public school supporter. And we'll work together, and with our dedicated staff across the division, we can optimize our revenues to support students and employees. Our commitment is to ensure that factors such as race, class, Our commitment is to ensure that factors such as race, class, gender, and special abilities do not dictate a child's success in school. We aim to achieve this by providing excellent teaching and learning opportunities for everyone, and fostering connections with families and communities, to ensure every student thrives. Our ultimate goal is to personally know each student, and for them to know that they matter. And this mission is embodied in the dedication and skills of our ACPS staff. The budget is a reflection of our commitment to this mission, and I will work with the ACPS Board to strive to maintain our current resources across schools and departments to see our mission through. And again, I thank you, School Board, and Chair Lee, I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Dr. Haas, and to all of our staff who worked very hard on that draft funding request. We have our copies, and we will dig in, and we'll have our first work session next week over those topics. And to anyone in the public, if you have any questions, you can also look at the draft funding request, and send your questions to budget@K12Almarl.org.
I would just like to take notice that Supervisors Diane the McHale and Ned Galloway, both of whom served on this board for many years, and who are some of our strongest advocates on the Board of Supervisors are here, and I'd like to also take note that the Supervisors have allocated additional funding for our capital needs, and I thank you very much, and I know my colleagues on the board do as well.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have our other business, 4.1, the redistricting study, Superintendent's recommendation. I believe Rosalyn Schmidt will give that.
an update on the redistricting study, including the Superintendent's recommendation. Dr. Haas, do you want to give any opening?
I, thank you, Ms. Schmidt. First of all, I just really want to, I want to start by thanking you for, you really did, normally there are a few roles that lead these processes, and Rosalyn recognizing that, it really needed a comprehensive view, from the Chief Operating Officer's perspective, took it over, pulled in staff from Transportation, Building Services, to support, as well as our third-floor staff, and really led a challenging process, because the other big thank you that goes out is to the members of the committee, because we really asked them to do something which is next to impossible, which is to come in with your expertise, you know, you review everyone's application, you see these incredible backgrounds that they've got, planning, and, you know, some of them with Transportation, Urban Design, and you bring them in, and they're still parents, they're still families, and so they've got to be able to thread the needle between where their heart is, and what, how they can support their community, and knowing that they all have children in the mix, but also then bringing that perspective to it, with their professional expertise. And really can't thank that committee enough. I fully support their recommendation, and so I want Ms. Schmidt to go ahead and provide the details.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. So just as, let me make sure I can voice that, as some background, and this was presented to you when you approved this study back in August. So in response to overcrowding at Baker Butler, and planned developments along 29 North Corridor, a new elementary school is planned. That was included in the capital slide at the end of that budget presentation. Unfortunately, based on the timing of that available funding, that school will not open until the 2930 school year. Baker Butler needs more immediate capacity leave, right now, yesterday probably. With more than 700 students, it is the second-largest elementary school in the division, and is only projected to grow more. In addition to Baker Butler, two other Northern feeder pattern schools are experiencing enrollment challenges, Woodbrook over-enrolled, and Stony Point under-enrolled. And so, in August, the Board directed the Superintendent to convene a redistricting advisory committee, and conduct a comprehensive study about the potential boundary changes for next school year. This was the objectives that this Board approved, and the committee had used. The primary objective of the study was to recommend a two-phased approach to creating new boundaries in Northern feeder pattern. It included making a recommendation for boundary changes that would be implemented next school year, as well as a preliminary recommendation for a boundary for the new elementary school, keeping the end in mind, and working through a phased approach. So the objectives in Phase 1 on the right, where the committee was striving to achieve, which was decrease enrollment at Baker Butler, decrease enrollment at Woodbrook, increase enrollment at Stony Point, involve other schools, either to increase or decrease to achieve those objectives, adjust middle school boundaries, finalize the location of the new elementary school, and create a preliminary boundary. So as Dr. Haas said, it was a complicated study, but we progressed. The committee was given guiding principles to evaluate options, those included around the duration of the boundary, with a goal of three to five, or five to seven years, a goal of contiguous areas, considering walk zones, transportation efficiencies, not splitting neighborhoods, we had a lot of conversations around demographic balance, balancing facility utilization, if it can be avoided, not toggling households back in both phases, and the concept of split feeder patterns, which is when a school is, elementary school is distributed to attend two different middle schools. Echo Dr. Haas's gratitude to these committee members. We had a committee of 19, we started off slightly bigger, lost some along the way, but we ended with 19 strong, representing all schools that were in the study, as well as two committees, the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, and the Office of Community Engagement within a lens of equity. These were all volunteers, all parents, who remain committed to this work, and I had a couple of them and said, that was a great experience, I don't want to do that again. I did have one that said that she would do it again, but again, it was a lot of time, a lot of emotional energy. While I facilitated the study, we had a full team behind the work, and behind the scenes, including Maya Komazawa from our fiscal, Michelle Instruction, Eric, Bill, Rich, Lauren, John, and Judy. So again, thank you for their support in this work. The process that was followed was, the committee was formed and met beginning in October. They met seven times, and finalized their recommendation earlier this month. Towards the end of their process, we hosted four community meetings to get feedback on the final scenario, and a community survey was issued as well. That brings us to the February/March timeframe. This item is for you for information only. This is the Superintendent's recommendation. It will be back before you on March 14th for action, and at the same time, you will also hold a public hearing for additional input in the process. If approved, boundaries would go into effect next school year, the '24, '25 school year. The recommendations include a preliminary boundary for the new elementary school, but that will be revisited in the fall of 2028, as we will have new sets of data. And again, the new school will open at this point, August 2029. You're going to see a lot of maps, so this just frames you in the current boundary, in which schools were in the study. So in the urban ring, you have Greer, Agner-Hurt, and Woodbrook. Up the 29 Corridor, you have Hollymead and Baker Butler. Broadus Wood on the left side of the screen, and Stony Point and Stone Robinson on the right side of the screen. We're going to share a lot of data around capacity and enrollment, so I think it's important to know the source of those data points. So first, enrollment projections. Dr. Haas, in that last slide showed our enrollment projections division-wide. We produce those annually, and we produce a 10-year enrollment projection. It's based on historical grade-level progression methodology, which is the same methodology that the Weldon Cooper Center uses in many other school divisions. It uses historical data, we know on average how many students at a school, at a specific grade level, progress to the next grade level. And that using those progression rates out, we're able to predict the next 10 years, and then we select different historical models based on the level of growth in those areas. In full transparency, enrollment has become difficult to predict since the pandemic. We know that growth in Alamo County is also offset by declining birth rates. That means we have low incoming kindergarten classes, and that is mimicking state trends as well. We have increasing alternative schooling and high housing costs. So what we are predicting in the short term is that elementary school projections remain relatively stable, but will grow over the long term. So that's one side of the equation, which is our enrollment. We compare that against our building capacity. Our building capacity calculation is based on current programs and staffing levels. It is not how many kids we can put in the building because the fire marshal said so. It's how many that we can put in the building and effectively deliver instruction, and our programs such as sped programs, preschool programs, our differentiated staffing model, et cetera. So combining those two figures, our enrollment projections by school, and our building capacity by school, we're able to predict and project our capacity conflicts. So what this chart shows is the projected capacity conflicts for the schools in the study for the next five years. I'll just walk you across Agner-Hurt to orient you. So Agner-Hurt has a K-5 building capacity of 432 students. When we compare that against their enrollment projection, we estimate that they will have 30 seats next year, so a positive number means there's available seats. A red is overcapacity. Typically, when we talk about K-5 building capacity, we do not factor in trailers, because we want, trailers are a temporary solution. But due to the nature of the study, and the immediate timeline of that new school, we did factor in trailers as a short-term solution. So you'll see different numbers for Hollymead and Baker Butler, so we factored their trailers in. And then Agner and Woodbrook, we typically use current programs, but there's, and we'll get into, there's a difference of their pre-K programs. So we use numbers that assume that the pre-K classrooms were moving back to Woodbrook. That decreases Woodbrook's capacity for K-5 students. So this data is for the next five years, in the short term. The next table is years 5 through 10, so these are the more long-term capacities. The numbers in yellow changed for a couple reasons. One, we're not factoring in trailers, and we talked about long-term, so these are the numbers used when we were talking about the new school. And two, they placed preschool programs in the right place. And what I mean by that, is our preschool programs right now are where there are space. Broadus Wood hosts multiple preschool programs that have Baker Butler students and Greer students. Hollymead's two pre-K classrooms are the majority of other districts. So this assumes and puts the preschool programs in the right place, so we know where to build, where to have the capacity in the future. Another set of data point that the committee weighed was the developments in the pipeline. We had a representative from the Office of Community Development come and share, district by school district, where there are projects that are under review, where there are projects approved, and the potential yield for those projects. So this is just a snapshot of it, but if you want more information by district and by exact developments, we have it, it's also on the redistricting website. There were three in particular that we needed to keep an eye on, because they are the larger one, and they are already started. So that is the North Point Development, which is on 29 North, on the east side of 29 North of Prophet. Hollymead Town Center, which is in the vicinity of Target, and then the Brookhill Development, which is 29 North and Polo Grounds Road. So I just have some additional data on the three schools that were the objectives. So first, Baker Butler, as I mentioned, it's the second-largest elementary school in the county, its current enrollment is over 700 students, and that is 200 more than their building capacity when you don't factor in their trailers. The blue line is their enrollment, it was pretty steady back in the early 2014, and has slowly grown, and projected to continue to grow based on the rate of development in that area. The yellow line is their capacity if you factor in their trailers, and the red line is building only. Overcapacity is a number, but we did our best to quantify the impact of that number. So the most noticeable is that all six 5th grade classes are located in a trailer. Their pre-K programs are impacted, as I mentioned, pre-K programs are where their kids, where there's space. So they are currently enrolled at Broadus Wood, Hollymead, and Agner-Hurt. The single pre-K class that is at Baker Butler is limited based on the size of the room available. All our building capacity figures are about classrooms, but they're having space constraints in what we call their core spaces. So cafeteria to accommodate all lunches, they have lunch begins at 10:25 and ends at 1:35. Kindergarten classes eat in their classroom, and they're having challenges around parking and drop-off as well. To ensure there's enough classroom spaces, all the smaller support spaces are crunched and shared, so these are just some examples around our EL teachers, three to a space, there's no conference or meeting room, not enough staff bathrooms, the reading intervention is the speech pathologist share space, et cetera. So we just hope to paint the picture. We've gotten a lot of feedback that the recommendation doesn't move enough kids, and I think this is why, and we can talk about why more were not considered, but just to keep this in the picture, this is the why, why we want to provide relief. So on the opposite end of the spectrum, Stony Point is one of our smaller elementary schools, and they have an opposite enrollment challenge. So this gives you a wider look, this goes back from 2005, time it was growing, had a peak around 2010, and then since then, has, as a rural school, has declined. Pre-pandemic, they were 232, they took a dip like most of our schools, and have been stable since, which we project to continue. Their current enrollment is 181 students. Being a small school has its challenges, we just tried to highlight a couple of them. First and foremost, is their grade level cohort. When they're so small, the number per grade matter, and either they have too much for two classes, or too little. And based on our staffing formulas, this has resulted into either a large single class in a grade level, or the forcing of combo classes, whether that's a 4 or 5 class, or a 2, 3 class. They've had challenges with their part-time staff allocations, and the ability to attract and retain quality staff and their specialists, so their current math, art, and music allocation are a .4 FTE, and they often have to combine multiple roles to make someone full-time. So here are just some examples of what that looks like, when the grade level cohorts present some challenges. So, and the dark orange on the left is what happened last school year, with 10 teachers spread across the 6 grades, they had to do some combo classes in their upper grades. In the current school year, they have a challenge in their 4th grade class, it's a class of 25 at the beginning of the school year, I've since heard from that teacher, it's now 26. And the last section is just a hypothetical, this is what it would look like if there were two per class, at an average of 19. So the last school in the objectives is Woodbrook. Again, the blue line is enrollment, and then the red is the capacity if the pre-K is at Woodbrook. Woodbrook was a small school, hovering around 300, 350. An addition was added to that school, and students were redistricted, that's the large jump in that 2018 timeframe. And they have since grown, they had a peak enrollment at 560 last school year, and at 523 this school year. So, some of their capacity challenges is that they were experiencing overcrowding issues last year. So in response, three preschool programs, two Bright Stars classrooms, and a special education pre-K were moved to Agner-Hurt this school year. We still are able to provide transportation, but it's operating in a shuttle manner. So students ride their neighborhood bus to Woodbrook, then they are switched to another bus which takes them to Agner-Hurt. This has proved, we prove both logistically challenging, but also reduces instructional time for preschool students. So while they're operating well this year, we want to bring those preschool programs back, and to do that, enrollment has to be reduced. Just a little history about, I mentioned a previous redistricting study. It was studied in the fall of 2017, and implemented in 2018, '19 school year when that addition opened. So that's a recap of that, of those moves, and it included moving students from Greer to Agner, students from Greer to Woodbrook, and students from Agner-Hurt to Woodbrook, including some areas that we're going to talk about tonight. Think it's important that it feels recent, it is recent, but it does not affect the same kids. The- It is recent, but it does not affect the same kids. The kids in this cohort have progressed to middle school. So what's changed since 2017? Two sides of the equation, capacity and the enrollment. We have modified our capacity estimate for that building now that we've, the addition has opened for several years and we have more experience with those multi-classroom spaces and how many we can effectively put in those spaces. But they've also had an increase in support services, EL teachers, reading interventions, which all require additional space and reduces the capacity of that building. Second, harder to predict was pretty significant shifts in enrollment patterns. We've had several apartment complexes during that study which had very stable enrollment have since experienced growth and have larger number of students. That's due to different housing patterns of the city, economic factors and others, but an enrollment projection model would not have picked that up. So with all that background data and more, I just highlighted the big stuff. We gave them a big binder of data. We worked with them to develop scenarios. I will not spend all night discussing every scenario that they created, but I just do want to emphasize that they were thoughtful, modified, eliminated scenarios. They started in the long term, got stuck, moved to the short term, moved back to the long term, and ultimately were able to narrow it down to several scenarios which they shared with the community for feedback. So they shared three scenarios related to Stony Point, and that's a map here. It included Stony Point A, which moved kids from Stone Robinson, Stony Point B, which moved kids from Baker Butler, and then a combination of those two scenarios. They narrowed it down to several, what we called Baker Butler and Hollymead scenarios. All four were all variations of neighborhoods that were south of Airport Road and west of 29 North, so in the Target-Hollymead Shopping Center area. Those four options, the primary differentiation between was the number of students. So option one moved 73 students, all the way to an option four, which moved 101 students, and were a variation of different neighborhoods in that area. And lastly, they had two scenarios which moved students from Woodbrook to Agner-Hurt. One was Woodbrook A, as I mentioned, those neighborhoods of Minor Ridge and Branchlands. And B was actually a double move. It would move students from Woodbrook to Agner. Agner didn't have enough room to take all of those kids, so then it moved a neighborhood from Agner to Woodbrook. With those scenarios finalized, there were four community meetings that were held. One at Woodbrook, one at Baker Butler, there was a virtual meeting, and one at Stone Robinson. Each had a small group protocol which gained feedback, so those links are feedback from those meetings. As I mentioned, we also issued a community survey. There's a summary report of that survey, and then all the open-ended comments from that survey organized by scenario. And we also maintained an email address, receiving 35 emails for feedback. So with that background, here is the recommendation. As Dr. Haas said, this was the committee's recommendation, and we made no modifications. I think it's important to mention, as a committee of 19, I think only one of these was fully unanimous. We did take votes, and so these were the majority. So Stony Point A is the recommendation, which moves 42 students in the area of Riverview and Cascadia from Stone Robinson to Stony Point. Students in this area are currently districted to attend Burley Middle School, and so no change is, to middle school boundaries is recommended. So the first map just identifies the area impacted. So as the light orange is Stone Robinson, the dark orange is Stony Point, and the area left center of your screen is the impacted area. If we zoom in, this is a neighborhood near Darton Tow Park. The hatched area is the area that we are discussing. And then lastly, zooming back out, this is what the map would look like if the new boundaries So just a couple of data points on what the impact of this would be if accepted. So same format as the previous charts. This just shows the after of Stony Point and Stone Robinson. So Stony Point with a capacity of 228 and a current enrollment of 181. This proposal would had 42 students, and so when you take those 42 students and you add them to your enrollment projections for Stony Point, these are our updated enrollment projections with those neighborhoods compared against the capacity number. You'll see there is an asterisk on the capacity number for Stony Point. We had a lot of discussion about the capacity for Stony Point, and there's further detail in the community presentation if you're interested. The committee also looked at demographic inputs. They looked at race, which is in the meeting materials. We're highlighting here three student population groups, which are English learners sped and something we call Gap Group 1, which is a state designation that includes students with disabilities, English language learners, and economically disadvantaged students. So you can see the current percentages by Stony Point and Stone Robinson and what they would look like after if these neighborhoods were to be moved. And the last set of data for this particular scenario has to do with split middle school feeder patterns. Stony Point is a district that attends two different middle schools. Currently, 69% of their population attends Burley and 31% attends Lakeside. That would be impacted by this scenario as Cascadian-Riverview, sorry for the typo, also attend Burley. So their new percentage would be 75-25. And here's the distance comparison, the distance of this neighborhood from Stony Point and from Stone Robinson. The recommendation for Baker Butler and Hollymead is scenario three, which moves 88 students from Baker Butler to Hollymead in the areas of Timberwood Boulevard, Abington, and Monakin Lane. Students in this area currently attend Lakeside Middle School, and no change to middle school boundaries is recommended. Both Baker Butler and Hollymead are both districted to Lakeside. So the impacted area is on the right. This is the area of 29 North. 29 North is the thick pink line. I don't know if I do have it. This is, I shouldn't use that flag. Target's right there. This is a new apartment complex here. Just zoomed in on the impacted area. And the last visual is if accepted, what the new boundaries would look like. So here's the capacity impact if this recommendation was accepted. Baker Butler would lose 88 students, so here's their revised projection. As you can see, they're still in the red, and as a reminder, that capacity does, already includes their trailers. And Hollymead, next year is projected to have 17 students, but that available capacity is projected to dwindle. This committee wrestled very heavily with how much to provide relief to Baker Butler versus the capacity of Hollymead, and so I think this illustrates their attempt to balance it to the best of their ability. This is the demographic impact if accepted. Again, the first line is the current percentage of English learners sped in Gap Group 1 at each school, and then the bottom line is how the school would change if that neighborhood And then the last scenario for next school year is the Woodbrook to Agner, and it's recommended for scenario A, which moves 59 students in the areas of Minor Ridge, Branchland, and Pinehaven from Woodbrook to Agner. Students in these areas currently attend Journey, and no changes to the middle school boundaries is recommended. To orient you, here's 29 North. This is Fashion Square Mall here, and it's the area of the hatched. This last image is if the new boundaries are accepted, what the boundaries would look like. Lot of conversation around contiguous boundaries. I think it's important to note that they weren't contiguous, Agner was not contiguous to start with. Here's the capacity data if this recommendation were to be accepted. Again, the net difference is 59 students, and so you can see the available capacity at Agner-Hurt and the available capacity at Woodbrook. Additional data point on the demographics of these two schools. Again, the current demographics of Woodbrook and Agner on the first line, and then what the after would be if these students were moved. Last piece of data point, Agner-Hurt is another district that is currently split in their middle school boundaries. Woodbrook is not. 100% of Woodbrook attends Journey. Currently, Agner-Hurt, 80% attend Burley and 20% attend Journey. In this scenario, the proposal is to keep those students at Journey, which impacts the split at Agner-Hurt from 80-20 to 70-30. So moving towards the long term, almost there, is the new school. Again, that's scheduled to open in the 29-30 school year. As a reminder of the timing, this board did request both schools to be constructed at the same time, but funding limitations required you to prioritize. And the time we prioritized the Mountain View District and the Northern feeder pattern, the study was born on that conversation. Again, we're in the middle of the study, and it's scheduled to open for the 29-30 school year. There were two sites that were considered. We have been proffered by two developers. One in the North Point Development, that's a fully graded pad site, 10 acres, small for a elementary school, large for a proffer. It's in a good location. We're actually in the process of negotiating a revision to that. It's pad-ready, very favorable proffer. The Brookhill proffer, smaller, that's within the Brookhill Development. Again, that's Polo Grounds Road and 29 North. That is not as flat, and it is smaller acres. We've had a couple of questions on this. The high school site is different than this proffer. There were two proffers related to the Brookhill Development. This was specifically for an elementary school. The committee developed preliminary boundaries for both of these sites, but ultimately recommended the North Point site. And here is what a preliminary boundary could look like for that, which would be in the red, and it would include 29 North, primarily all the neighborhoods north of Prophet. It would include some changes. At Hollymead, there's a neighborhood of Spring Ridge and Turnberry. And then the areas in purple, we tried to place them, and then we said it doesn't really matter at this stage. Those areas in purple could attend North Point, they could stay at Baker, some of them could go to Broadus Wood. I don't think you need to decide that now. And here's what the capacity and demographic impact of those new boundaries would be. One of the reasons North Point was favored over the Brookhill site was the ability to utilize it with more current kids, which is that 280 to 350 number. There were some other rationales, but that was one of the more compelling ones, was it was around, you didn't have to hedge on too much new development. There were current kids that could attend that school. So that concluded the recommendations on scenarios. We have one more recommendation of something we call legacy boundary clause. We are recommending that all rising fifth graders who are current fourth graders may elect to remain at their current school next year. Their siblings may also elect to remain at their current school for one year. Transportation will not be provided, though. Two additional long-term considerations that we want staff, our staff wants you to be aware of is, hopefully, it's self-evident that this new school is definitely needed. These boundary changes provide some immediate relief, but the study affirmed the need for additional sites in this feeder pattern, and so that funding and timing of that new elementary school must remain in the capital program. The second is the concept of the centralized pre-K. That was in the Long Range Planning Report out in the CNA, and I'm connecting it to this study because if you look at the projections of the urban ring schools, additional capacity is needed in that area of the district. And a centralized pre-K facility, if it was constructed to serve the Agner-Hurt, Greer, and Woodbrook communities, would provide capacity relief to those schools. So acknowledge it's a larger community conversation around if that's the pre-K model we want to pursue. I'm just putting it in the lens of a capacity solution for those schools. Next steps, again, this recommendation is for information only tonight. This will be before you on March 14th. There will be a public hearing and then a vote on the recommendation, and then if approved, new boundaries will go into effect for the 24-25 school year. Open up for questions and comments.
I know you don't know this now, but I would be very interested in knowing how many pre-K students we have in the urban ring.
First of all, thank you. I know that a lot of work went into this. I do have several questions, so bear with me. My first is a basic question. When we vote on the 14th, are we voting for all of these as a whole? Do we vote for them each recommendation individually?
So I will defer to the chair on that. I would say they are able to operate independently of each other, so I think individual votes could happen.
Okay. Thank you for that. I do have a few questions. The first is related to the Stony Point, which I think was the first scenario that you gave us. The main goal in all of this was, if we went back, was overcrowding at Baker Butler. So I'm a little confused as to why we are pulling from Stone Robinson, which is not overcrowded. It will give them even more seats. To pull into a school that, in all honesty, I have a lot of concerns about sending additional students to when it is at the very bottom of our list as far as infrastructure and top on our list as far as needing improvements, and we are talking about adding 42 more students to a school that is already physically crumbling. So I don't know if that's something that you can provide insight to me today, or if it's something that you can get to me, but it is deeply concerning to me that, one, we're pulling from a school and not, when another scenario is taking from the overcrowded school, and we are not doing the infrastructure necessary to the school before adding more students.
I'm going to switch to a different visual. This is a map of Baker Butler's current boundary and a map of where Baker Butler's students live. This study had multiple objectives, right? Increase Baker Butler, I mean, decrease Baker Butler, increase Stony Point. So ideally, yes, they would, to find a solution that would decrease Baker Butler and increase Stony Point was studied and evaluated. There's two different, three different versions of it. One, in fact, included this area down here, which was the Stony Point B scenario. This area up here was discussed as well. This is Burnley Station and Gilbert Station. It was ultimately eliminated from discussion due to flooding concerns, and then we rebrought it back again, and there was conversations around transportation efficiencies and the challenges of what that would do to our bus routes, increasing our bus routes by at least one, or by one. And then there was conversations around, if Stony Point needs enrollment, they need growth, and so putting more rural areas into Stony Point is not a long-term solution.
Okay. And you and I can talk about this later. I would, and you and I can talk about this later when we meet, but that is something I would like a little more information on. I would like to go on the record, I guess, in saying tonight that I'm disappointed that we don't have public comment tonight, if this is on the agenda, and that's not directed at you, I just want that on the record. Because I, and along with my fellow board members, have gotten a lot of feedback, and I know you have as well, in email and phone calls and personal meetings. And so, you know, for us to make such a very large decision, it's, it's heavy for us, and there's a lot to consider. And so to have a public hearing the same night that we are going to be voting on such a big thing and not having public comment tonight feels wrong to me. My other question has to do with Hollymead, and some of the feedback I'm getting from there is that I think some of the things that I'm hearing is that there was not a community meeting specifically for Hollymead. A lot of the parents didn't realize that all of these students were going to be added to their school. Do you have any insight as to that as well?
We advertised all community meetings to the, to all the schools that were in this study. We ultimately selected locations of schools where kids were being moved from, which is how the solutions. But we, at most meetings, we had multiple schools attend.
Okay. And in your opinion, do you feel like you had good representation from the Hollymead community in feedback and things like that?
I would say across the board, with the exception of Stone Robinson and a particular Baker-Butler neighborhood, we did not hear a lot on this study. I'll just be fully transparent. I will say that's why we have representatives on the committee, though, and we had a very vocal and active participants from Hollymead District on the committee.
Okay. And then my last question, I think, does go back to transportation. Was it considered, or was anybody asked with these changes, if that would change whether or not their kids would be riding the bus or not? Because I know that in some of these scenarios, for instance, the Stony Point, you know, you're talking about an extra three miles, but in the opposite direction of the highway or whatever. So, you know, some of the feedback I've been hearing is that more students will be riding the bus and will not be driven to school. So when we're talking about a scenario that was taken out because we may be adding another bus route, but that may have potentially solved this problem in a different way, now with the bus situation, was that taken into consideration as well?
That was not a point of discussion that I recommend, that I recall, and we did not specifically ask.
Okay. That's all I have for right now.
First, I really want to thank everyone on the committee. As someone who does a lot of work for, that's glamour-free and difficult, I really thank you for all that work. And I know that you and I have talked a lot about all of the conversation that went into it. So thank you very much. I also, I had some questions about that Watts Passage, Burnley Station consideration as well. I think something that might be unclear to people is that when you talk about flooding, we're not talking about like one day of closing schools because of flooding, we're talking about like several days in a row. So that's just one point that I wanted to make, not a question. So I want to talk a little bit more about the new developments, and I know that those numbers are not really included in the Hollymead, Baker-Butler scenario. So what would we be able to do to, like, how do you see dealing with those developments?
A new school?
Yeah.
I think it's important to know, and we, we have enrollment projections, that's based on historical modeling, right? And so when we see high development areas, we strive to choose the historical model that, sorry, that is the steepest, right? But there are limitations to that, right? Often we get feedback that you say, well, Brookhill has, I forget the number, 1,000 kids. So add 1,000 kids to Hollymead's projection. It's very difficult to prove when those kids come, how quickly that development will be built out. Will it be built out at all? And are they new kids, right? New development doesn't mean new kids. It could mean kids from within the district. I share all that to say, you can't ignore it, right? You just have to keep that in mind. And so that's every, multiple meetings we kept, don't forget about these big, these big developments and where they're going. I acknowledge that you can see when those numbers go red in both Hollymead and Baker-Butler, that they will have capacity challenges. Again, so that's why the new school, we're looking for a short-term solution that eases the capacity challenges at Baker-Butler right now.
Another piece of feedback that I got was whether or not the move to Stony Point would meet our staffing goals there. And could you just speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, we did some staffing allocation modeling and holding everything else equal. It should solve that issue of having enough to per grade level.
One thing that you and I talked about also is if, because of the developments or whatever reason, because this is hard to predict, Hollymead's enrollment does grow more than we expect it to, what are some ways that you can, is there a way to alleviate that?
Yep. So there are, as I said, these are a little in the weeds, but there's a lot of operational things going on right now as we manage different capacities. So I mentioned there's two preschool programs at Hollymead right now that serve majority of schools outside that district. So if capacity becomes an issue at Hollymead, those preschool programs could move where there's more space, so that's option one. This year, we have coordinated with the IRC to place families in the Hollymead District because there's space. That has resulted in growth in that area, and if people have shared, well, they've grown since the beginning of the school year. It's those families. That's a short-term solution for IRC, and so we can operationally change that as well. And then third, always temporary capacity. And again, it would be temporary because the new school would come online then.
Those are all my questions. Thank you very much, Rosalyn.
One of my biggest concerns is the, this Stone Robinson to Stony Point move with the state of Stony Point. Like, I keep, I keep going back to that, like, whenever we're all looking at this, like, red, yellow, green. Stony Point renovations, again, like, we don't know what that would look like, but when it says fiscally year 25, would those be there for 25? If that money was available, or would those renovations then cap in and then not come online to the 25, 26 school year? Do we have a feel? Because that, that's a piece that really is really concerning, moving a group of kids to a school that has some infrastructure issues and knowing that it could be up to three years? That's what I'm trying to, like.
Yep. So typically, in a capital lifespan, with that scale of renovation, you would design for a year and construct over one to two years, maximizing summers. And so, and I would say the current budget under consideration by the board supervisors does not include funding for that project as well, which shifts that. I do acknowledge the need for renovations, but if you have not visited Stony Point, I respectfully disagree that it's crumbling. I think Broadus Wood and Stony Point are older schools, but also have the most character and are very well-maintained. We're going to replace some casework this summer and with maintenance, making small improvements. So I encourage you to visit Stony Point while it is in need of some long-term renovations is, the score is relative to our other schools.
Thank you. And as you looked at, kind of, this may be too much in the weeds, but as they looked, you looked at the movement kind of patterns, you were looking at different pieces of equity, one including special ed numbers. Were they looking, knowing that kids in special ed don't all go into just a general special ed classroom, but we have A base, B base, C base, was any, was any of that looked at? Or is that to know if those schools would have the ability for those kids to come?
Not at the committee level. Happy to talk about that with the SPED staff. Where SPED factored into the conversations was around the percentage and the demographic impact. It's also factored in on the capacity side of the equation. Schools that have those programs factor that into their capacity.
And then the last question also might be weedy, but just particularly because what you said about IRC, is we think about the, kind of, the Baker-Butler to Hollymead move and the Woodbrook to Agnor move. Was any, was anyone looking at public bus routes, knowing that some of the families in those neighborhoods, some of the neighborhoods are affected, are relying on public transportation? And just knowing that so many of our schools don't have access? This might be a larger board supervisor's conversation.
Yeah. Can you elaborate on what the concern would be?
Well, with parents being able to come to parent-teacher conferences, to literacy nights, pick up their kids if they were sick, you know, do we know, you know, the longer-term conversation we've had, you know, with board of supervisors, how do we get better access to parents without cars? Was any, anything looked at that that would be actually help, neutral, or hurt?
It was not discussed.
Thanks.
Okay. I have questions about the Cascadia move to Stony Point. We've received a lot of emails saying that the parents may not have had a chance to give very much input. Were they, or could you address that first, or my first question?
So we, they were able, and we, and we did receive impact on the survey, the community meeting, there was a representative on the community that lived in that neighborhood, and we have received various emails from that community.
Okay. And you might have already answered this question, but when you look at, like, the northern part of Baker-Butler, each of those red dots as to the east of 29 represent houses, right?
They represent students.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, well, that's what I meant. But were any of those, was it ever considered by the committee to move those students to Stony Point instead of moving kids from Cascadia to Stony Point? Because that would take care of the problem at Baker-Butler, plus what's going on at Stony Point.
Yep. That's the area that we were discussing, Burnley Station, Gilbert Station, that I was talking about earlier.
Okay. So what was the downfall? I think you told me spill, but what was the downfall?
So there were considerations due to some flooding concerns, there's several low-line bridges in that area. Lot of discussion on how often that happens. We don't have good data, but as one committee member said, any concern of flooding data is enough, right? And the second was around the rural nature of that. If the point is to provide Stony Point with some stable enrollment, ideally you would have put a newer development, not rural. And lastly, a transportation efficiency. Two buses currently serve that area, and they're combined with other Baker-Butler neighborhoods. If those neighborhoods were districted to Stony Point, it would still require two buses. So you have a net increase of one additional bus route.
I don't know if this question goes to you or to Chair Lee. I think one of the questions is, in my mind, it's difficult to hear public comment and then make a decision, a vote that night. Is there any possibility of doing the public hearing, public comment, and delaying the vote? I don't know.
Operationally, I think that would put a real hardship on the families that are going to move. So I would be, I would, not before that, but we will also have public comment on March 7th, which is what I've shared with people I've written to. So people are certainly welcome to give public comment then. As we've all noted, we've gotten a lot of emails, so I don't think that there is a lack of public input, truly. So people have, are having opportunities to reach out to us and talk with us, and we'll have opportunity on March 7th as well.
Can I ask a question about that, then? Is it possible to change the public hearing to March 7th?
We have a public hearing on the budget on March 7th. And we've also, I know that Rosalyn has shared out with the community that March 14th is going to be the public comment night, the public hearing night.
But there are actually two chances for people to talk to us about this, the 7th and the 14th.
Yes. If not the 29th also, I don't know if there's public comment on the 29th, but also possibly then.
We don't have public comment on the 29th, mostly.
Okay. Then 7th and 14th.
Can you pull up a picture of the Stone Robinson thing again, the detail? Not to question the cartographers, but, and I don't know how long you've been here, but how is that little portion, how was that carved out to go to Stone Robinson anyway? And maybe that's irrelevant, but it's just an odd.
This area actually, what previously was just districted to attend Stony Point, there was a previous redistricting study in the 2012 timeframe. Back in the 2012 timeframe approximately, Stony Point was actually over 300 kids. They were utilizing all four trailers, and so there was a redistricting study to study, to move kids from Stony Point to Stone Robinson. Ultimately, a solution was not identified. There was various challenges in that. And so soon after that decision, Cascadia came online from the site plan review process. And so there was an administrative decision to change that area to Stone Robinson before kids were, were in. It wasn't a full redistricting study because it didn't impact any kids. Unfortunately, they didn't have the crystal ball that Stony Point wasn't continuing to increase, and so that's the result of that.
At some point, I want to hear how Woodbrook got cut up in, but not tonight. That's very weird.
Could you go back to the map that you were on for quite a while that had the red dots on it? So it's my understanding that, but I'm not quite sure how far over it goes, that there's 57 students in that region. Is that about right?
Yes.
And does that, but does that go all the way over to 29? Do you have to go all the way over to 29 to grab all 57 of those students?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I'll just add, and this will be very quickly, that I, quick, I have many of the same concerns that everybody else has talked about, and they already talked about it, so I won't. But I thought that was an important question because right now, those kids go down 29. So they're going over to 29. If they're all the way back, they're going over to 29. They go down 29 to get to Baker-Butler, down Profit. And it looks easier on the map to go to Stony Point, but I understand that the roads are rough, and I'll probably go check it out before the next meeting.
Yeah, especially that. Okay, one other question. You mentioned flooding in that area. Which roads especially would that be a problem on, or do you know?
I would, I have a visual that I can provide. Let me do that so I don't misstate the roads.
Watts Passage.
Yeah, Watts Passage. Yeah, it's a, it's pretty creek, yeah.
It's during that last flash flooding, it's where the two people were rescued in the car. And there's, there's multiple roads that cross it.
Can I ask, then, what they do when they go to, so they don't have to cross that road to go to Baker-Butler? Are there alternate routes to get to Stony Point if there was flooding?
So they currently, no bus routes cross that area. Those all go to Baker-Butler, so they go up to 29 North, but our Lakeside routes and our Almore High School routes all bifurcate on that railroad track as well. Part of that is a little historical, though, because the bridges that went over the railroad tracks were not rated for buses.
But now they are, correct?
But now they are.
Right. So now it's not as big of an issue. It would not be an issue for the buses to go over them.
For the weight.
For the weight.
Yep.
And on the flooding, when those flood, do those tend to be the days that we close school for flooding anyway?
Yes, and, again, they're more multi-day events. And again, they're more multi-day events. And again, I don't want to paint pictures, like, it doesn't happen all the time, but when it happens, it's significant.
Right. I, I guess that's what I'm getting to. This isn't something that's happening multiple times a year or, you know, it's a, okay. Thank you.
The only question I still have left, I'm so sorry, is if you're in the Stony Point District as it is right now, are there flooding concerns along those same roads? Are the bridges on that side?
It's right on the border. I mean, again, I'll bring the map. It's right on the border, so they don't, it's, it's, I think this follows the rail. Let me get a map, so I can speak.
I'll check. I mean, we'll do some homework on that.
Yeah, because I was thinking that Watts Passage Road is really in Stony Point's District instead of being in Baker Butler. But I might be wrong, but I was thinking that.
Take more kids out of Baker Butler and alleviate the overcrowding more.
All right. Thanks very much, Rosalyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All we have left is announcements and school board superintendent business. Do we have any announcements or school board superintendent business?
I do not.
All right. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.